And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. For that Pastor Michael Orr, welcome sir.
Let's pray together. Righteous and loving heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this wonderful city, for this community, and all of those who are part of it. We pray first and foremost Thanksgiving for all the good fortune that we've had, and all of the businesses, and all of the successes that we've seen come this way into this part of the country. And with all of that wealth, Father, we know that there comes challenges as people move in. We pray for those who are struggling financially, that move to this area looking for jobs, and all of the influx of those who are hurting and struggling in our economy, please be with them. Help us as a community to do what we can to meet their needs, and to help them to be productive, and to find jobs, and to continue to add and increase to the well-being of this community, and take care of all of its residents. Father, we pray safety as the summer comes for all of our children, especially when we consider all the swimming and other activities they might be doing. Please keep everyone safe and healthy. Be with our schools as they prepare to finish up, and to let out, and just be with all of the students, the teachers, and all of those who are preparing to end this school year. Be with all of our city council, and all the staff, and those who work so hard, so diligently to keep this city running. We know that there are so many new projects going, and so many new things that are happening, and we pray a blessing on our city. Help us to make decisions with wisdom and understanding, with the best interest of all those in Saginaw in mind. Help us as citizens of Saginaw to support our city council, our mayor, and all of those who work to protect, our first responders, and others who do such a wonderful job to take care of all of us, and to make sure that we're safe. Father, bless their families, bless them, help them to be in good health. Help us as we make these decisions, and we have this council today, for all things to be according to your will, for everyone here in Saginaw to continue to be a more prosperous and caring community, to look out for each other, and for our fellow man. We thank you again for giving us life, for this rain. We pray for those who were affected by the tornadoes all around the country, and we pray that you would help them, and those who have lost homes and property, that you would help them to recover all those things that they lost. We thank you again, Lord, for providing for us. We thank you for this wonderful community, and we pray your continual blessing upon it. We ask you all these things in your holy son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Item number three is honor of participation. Please silence your cell phones, devices, etc., so we can have a focused meeting. If you do want to speak on any posted item, see the city secretary and see what your form to fill out, so we don't miss you. And any person is allowed to speak on any posted item. Item number four is the consent agenda. Item A, action regarding approval of minutes May 7th. B is action regarding minutes May 14th. C, action regarding ad valorem tax collection contract with Tarrant County. D, action regarding authorization of individual project order with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for East Cement Creek Drainage Project. I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you Patrick.
One second.
All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed are none. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. All are present this evening. Moving on, item number five. Item number five is presentation of awards, 2019 Saginaw Photo Contest. For that Keith Reinhardt.
Good evening Mayor and Council. Very exciting day for me, getting to show off what our residents have done, and how they participated. This is our sixth year to have the Images of Saginaw Photo Contest. We got an idea several years ago, kind of getting some ideas from other communities, and saw the excitement in those cities, and tried that here. And it's only taken off and gotten better each and every year. And like I said, this is our sixth annual contest. We have four different categories. The Saginaw scenes, can be landscape, nature, architecture, Saginaw people and activities, could be multiple things, Saginaw animals, spirit of Saginaw, what best represents the spirit of Saginaw, and then the best of show. And for right now, we have a little presentation to kind of show you what we're doing. Like I said, with our sixth year, the great thing is every year has gotten better. And kind of how we do our judging is we have some professional photographers come in, and give us their opinion, and do the judging, and we also have some amateur individuals to come in and give us their opinion, and kind of go from there. Our first award, for Saginaw scenes, and goes to Anthony Clark with Spring Saginaw Morning. jacket on Mexican hat. Our next award winner for the Saginaw people, is a name you've heard of, Anthony Clark with the Saginaw City Boys. Our next award winner is the Spirit of Saginaw, and our winner is Mary Raithor with Rings of Honor. If I remember correctly, Mary is a repeat winner, she won last year, one of her photographs. And finally, our best of show goes to Anthony Clark with Spring Saginaw Morning. Congratulations to all of our winners and all of our contestants. This year we had thirty-six entries.
Moving on, item number six. Item number six is proclamation for lifeguard your child month. I will read the proclamation first, and I'll allow the folks that are here to speak if they would like to. So this is all from the office of the mayor. Whereas drowning is the leading cause of accidental death for children aged one to four across the nation, whereas it only takes seconds for drowning to occur, it is imperative that adults not be distracted when they are designated adult watching children near or in water. Whereas we ask all parents and caregivers to lifeguard your child when they are near or in water. Whereas the Lifeguard Your Child campaign is an initiative of Safe Kids North Texas, led by Cook Children's Healthcare System, put into place to help prevent child injury and death. Lifeguard your child is being implemented across the city of Saginaw. Participating local agencies include Off the Deep End Aquatics, and Saginaw Parks and Rec. The goal of increased awareness and understanding by caregivers, policymakers, and the public at large regarding the possible dangers around all water environments will aid in the prevention of future child deaths. Whereas engaging Saginaw as a partner with Safe Kids North Texas in the Lifeguard Your Child regional campaign increases the reach of this year-round effort to provide ongoing education and awareness to protect children from drowning. It is for this cause that the above-named signed agencies join together to advocate for drowning prevention, education, awareness, and support for the community of Saginaw, Texas. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Todd Filippo, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Lifeguard Your Child Month, and urge all citizens to support the effort to prevent future needless child deaths from drowning. Folks who are here would like to speak? I think the Safe Kids North Texas folks are here. Anybody want to address the?
So, many of you may or may not know, as it says in the proclamation, that drowning is actually the leading cause of death for children one to four, and the second leading cause of death for children five to fourteen. As a response to that, Cook Children's, our healthcare system, created the Lifeguard Your Child campaign with a simple message, which is just to lifeguard your child, whether it's around bath time, because we've seen an increase in bathtub drownings, planned swim time, and unplanned swim time. Currently, we partner with forty-two cities and over seventy organizations to help families have free-to-low-cost swim lessons, free life jackets. We do a lot of water safety education, and we are really, really excited and proud to have Saginaw as a partner, because Off the Deep End and Parks and Rec has been phenomenal in getting the parents and families here in the community educated. So I really want to give a thanks to them, because it's not Cook Children's, it's more of the people here. So, thank you. Thank you.
Mary Copeland.
I just wanted to let you all know, in our first meeting in May, we had a proclamation to recognize May as Brain Cancer Awareness Month. And there's a family in Saginaw that came and presented a short speech to, you know, bring that awareness to Saginaw, and they announced that they would have a walk to bring that awareness to the community, and that was this past Sunday, and that was their second annual walk. And she wanted me to let people know that last year they had forty-seven, and her goal for this year was fifty, and they had seventy walkers, and seven dogs. And she wanted to thank Saginaw for participating and bringing the awareness of brain cancer to the community.
Thank you, Mary. Well done. Alright, so moving to item number seven, oath of office of Councilmember Place Five. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay, you'll recall at the last meeting, we canvassed the election from May the fourth. Councilmember Big Horse was not able to be here, so we need to take a moment tonight to swear her into office. So she'll join me down front, we will get that taken care of.
Okay, scoot back a little bit so I can get you. Okay. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Cindy Big Horse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Councilmember Place Five.
Of City Councilmember Place Five.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the city of Saginaw.
So help me God. Here's your certificate of election.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, item number eight, at 617, recess into workshop. Item nine is Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. A report, and for that, our friend Kai.
Good morning, oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kai, and I come from Burma, you know, slash Myanmar, and I'm very honored to be here to present about my countries, and you know, the programs that I came with. So, and I work for a government organization, which is, you know, focused on the urban planning, so I work with the governments, you know, Myanmar government staff, in terms of my, you know, my job. So, so last year, and I applied one program, so, which is called YSLI, Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative Programs. The program is basically designed to, you know, provide professional development and leadership skills to the young people in Southeast Asia, the age of between twenty-five to thirty, you know, thirty-five. So, basically, it's timeframe is like five week in, you know, United States, and four weeks with the host community. And so during my placement, you know, my, the fellows, you know, come learn about practical knowledge, and also the experience, and you know, the things that, you know, United States has been doing in this, you know, the specific cities. So, they have like four themes, and one program, you know, service engagement, economics empowerment, governments, and you know, society, and, you know, sustainable developments in the environment, which is the one that I applied for, that is designed to the, you know, green space planners, and you know, urban planner, and also the person who has been dealing with sustainable developments, and also environmental issues. So, and I just want to, you know, introduce about my country, so, they have two names, so Myanmar slash Burma, so, which has fifty-five million populations, and it, Myanmar is bordered by India, Slava, Thailand, Bangladesh, and China. I know like whenever like that I introduce to the people, people just all in a drawing a blank, you know, like where's Myanmar, and also like, you know, is, we know that like, you know, some people claim that like, we know that Burma, but not Myanmar, so that, that's the reason is like, Myanmar used to cause us a Burma, but in nineteen eighty-nine, you know, the military government changed the name. So much of the international community, they don't recognize, you know, they recognize the, you know, changing the name, but except, you know, I would say apart from like United States, United Kingdom, and small groups of, you know, country, they still use as Burma. So changing the name, you know, the military government stated that, you know, changing the name is because calling as a Burma is only represent to the one largest ethnic groups because Burma, so that's not very inclusive way to the other remaining one hundred and thirty-four, you know, ethnic groups, so they changes. So background information, we have occupied by British, and also Japanese, and also we got independent from nineteen forty-eight. And so, like I said, you know, we have one hundred and thirty-five ethnic groups, so after independence, you know, like small groups and large groups, you know, they tried to take, you know, over, and you know, to got powers, and ultimately, military government, you know, seize the power for so long. But we were lucky enough to have elections in two thousand and ten for the first time, two thousand and fifteen for the second time, so the next time is gonna be in two thousand and twenty. There's the, you know, the term durations for the legislation precedent, and the cabinet is five years. So, minimum wages in Myanmar is like, you know, four thousand eight hundred J, so when I convert it into dollar, it's gonna be like three dollars and sixty cent per day. So some of the areas, they couldn't reach to the point, especially, you know, conflict zone, and also like, you know, the small, the people from small city. So water assess, so ten million people don't have clean water assess, eleven billion people don't have decent toilet, and also like over three thousand, you know, children has been dying every year in terms of association with the diseases, you know, water insanitations. So, even in some areas of the Yangon, they still have a hard time to get, you know, running water, so like whenever they have water shortage, they go to the pound and to get water, so just the picture. So electricity assess, I would say, they need to address for the urban population, and also for the whole country. So, in spite of, you know, having over sixty-five rural populations, Myanmar is still regarded as a rural. So that's, you know, moving forward to the, you know, the city where I grew up, they have seventy-point-three-six million people, and also they have thirty-three township. Those, the city management has been done by Yangon City Development Committee, so they have twenty-four departments, and so, each of the like city, like general administrations department, work closely with the township level, and also they reported to the, you know, the committee, because we are really, really, you know, like a large populations, and so, so small, you know, like township need to deal with the general administration department. So in the past, we, you know, we can, you know, we, you know, the mayor, and also the committee members, they were, they were just appointed, so we, we couldn't, you know, pick the people as we like. So a couple weeks, a couple months ago, we have the first, you know, municipal election in Yangon. So here's the structure, you know, we can't stay elect the mayor, you know, so the yellow side is the, you know, appointed, the blue side is the, you know, elected. So we can, you know, select the vice mayor, but we still haven't, you know, got, so I'm, you know, I'm like, this is just like a, you know, a glass of water, you know, has full or half empty. So I'm very, you know, optimistic about the way of changing, so maybe next five or ten years, we will able to elect the mayor, hopefully. So, that's the, you know, the other side of the power point is that showing the numbers of voter, they have less than ten percent voter in, you know, for this election, so, which has happened, and it's sad. So that's the Yangon city hall, the building is one of the heritage building too. So, so after two thousand and ten election, you know, Myanmar became open, and also welcomed the like, you know, foreign investment, and also development project. But the problem is like, the government, you know, can't provide basic urban facility, and also infrastructure, so they have, you know, Yangon has been facing unique challenges in terms of, you know, lack of water assess, and electricity assess, and so many things, so that's the one thing that I just wanted to, you know, address. So flooding, we have like seven month, you know, rainy season, all the, you know, for one year. So we've been facing like every year for that kind of flooding, and also we lost a lot of money, so that's like, these are the new from international new agencies, and that I, you know, that people highlight. So that's my township. So every, some mornings, like we have to, you know, cross the, you know, the wires, and you know, get to the office, so that's the, every day, life. So, in Yangon, there's like very limited space, you know, area has a, you know, cross and row, and also like, there's no parking, you know, enough parking space, and also like, you know, water shortage, and no speed, you know, no speed limitations, and also like some of the, you know, heritage, we do have a really, you know, like beautiful heritage building, but there's no enough budget to maintain it, so this like, the signage and the colors of the buildings are really messy, and you know, dirty, but now Yangon Heritage Trust has been, you know, working on it. Oops. So, yeah. This is some pictures. So, so that, so, in terms of, you know, addressing the challenge, I would like to, you know, address these facts, so lack of capacity, they have only like thirteen town planner for the whole country, so it, you know, like it translated like one town planner is, you know, serving for the four million people. So there's a like one, you know, bit human, you know, result gap that we need to address, you know, in terms of tackle this problem. And also, we, you know, we, national urban planning policy stay developing at the, at the parliament, because they try to, you know, like doing, and you know, get things better, so I would say there is no urban planning policy right now. So lack of, you know, urban planning policy, there is no guideline and standard, you know, for the town planning, so, but we do have a, you know, building code, but no one follow, because government can't, you know, legalize the, the policy to take action for those people who break the laws. So, local check, balance, you know, local government, so like I said, only like, you know, we can't stay even elect the mayor, and also like, you know, twenty-five percent of the, you know, military guy has taking over seat on, in parliament, in terms of the constitution. So, we need to, you know, even amend the constitution, and also, you know, develop the institutionalization, I would say, to have a strong democracy system. So lack of people participation, I think every government has been, you know, like challenges to get, you know, people participation, but the worst part is that the people from Myanmar are not, are really, they are not really aware of their right, and also they're really afraid to speak out, in terms of the fears that they got from the, you know, military people. So I would say these are the challenges that we need to address immediately, you know, if we want to tackle these problems. So these are the, you know, the picture, with the beautiful people from here. So, I am having really good times, and you know, here in Saginaw, and I am really enjoying get to know more about city development, city management, and you know, right along with the police, and playing bingo at senior centers, and also meeting with the people who inspires me a lot, and, and thank you, you know, like, for these opportunities, and I, I've never been better, you know, for this time in my life, so, and also I am, you know, make sure to contribute, you know, all the things that I learned from here to my community, and also, yeah, share the experiences, you know, to the young people to come, you know, to the United States with the programs. And one, you know, like, unit things about Saginaw, which I think is that, I really like the Flower Mill Building, you know, that's a really unique things, and I don't know how to describe, but that, that's a really, you know, like symbolic features of the cities, and that building come is seeing, you know, far away. I just, I can't control myself, you know, not to look the, you know, that building when I, you know, cross, when I pass the, the building, so it was really interesting. And also, I, I, you know, like, I love to see, you know, like people from here, and also one fascinated things about is police department, and I really like police department. I wish I could trade the police department from here to my country, you know, to have a good public, you know, safety, service assess, and also to reduce crime rate, so thank you for this opportunity, and, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Mary?
Well, I think your country's on the right track to be involved in a program like this. I think it'll help a lot to have young people learn more, you know, methods of how to fix the problems. But I was also curious about what to fix the problems, but I was also curious about what the education system is like in your country.
I would say not really great, because the university that I apply, you know, that I want is, I think when I check on the world ranking university, it's gonna be like twenty, I was like below twenty thousand, so, which is not really great, and also, n- not only for the, you know, like, uh, like education, but also the government, you know, in the past, they try not to, you know, learn like human rights, democracy and things, so that's why we don't have political science school, we don't have urban planning school, so if, that's why, you know, we have a really big human gap, you know, human resource gap, so, to, you know, handle the situation, so that's why, you know, like, if we wanna do something, we have to invite, you know, more, you know, people from outside of the country, like we call it ASPAR, the problem is we have to pay so many, you know, thousands of dollar to, to get that kind of service, because we, we have, you know, lack of human resources in terms of, you know, education system.
Yeah, I have a quick question, since you talked about the grain elevators, and they're so iconic for this town, what do you think about the trains? Did you have to wait on the trains?
I mean, um, I would say, I really, you know, how would I say, whenever like, you know, that I got here, and I like, you know, saw like, piece up that we're gonna have a like bridge, you know, to over, to, you know, solve the, the traffic problems, so I was like, why you wanna, you know, like, build a, you know, bridge, it was like train, you know, like on and off going, so, so, and I mean like, and I have experience like waiting, so, I think that's a really good point, you know, like, from the urban planning side, you know, how are you gonna, you know, tackle, it, because it's just like, you know, uh, not only need to do from the like city lover, and also you have to deal with the, um, stick department, so, I mean, but I, but I, from my perspective, I really like, you know, like that train, you know, that railways and train, because that's a, you know, historic, you know, things, that's a culture, you know, and historic, and then you can, like, maybe like next ten years, hundreds, ten years, maybe a hundred years later, it can be a like, you know, showcase for the Saginaw, you know, they have that kind of things, you know, like, like transportations, and people, I think people love to see it, so, it should keep it.
I had a question about the appointed members of your local government, who actually appoints them?
Oh, so they found a committee, so, so that, they, they found a committee, so I don't know how they found the committee, they just like, like, like random people, like, okay, we're gonna do this committee, and they pick the people, so who have to, you know, like, have to be MB, so, so we have like a Yangon government, you know, like a, it's like a local government, you know, they represent, uh, they come from like a military, you know, people, so, so that's military people, point, you know, appointed the people.
So it's still military influence, it's the, that, they're connected to the military?
Yeah, because we have only like, you know, like, second term for, for the elections, I would say it's just not only, it's just like only six or seven years, because military has been controlling over sixty year, so they still getting bored, that's true.
Well, I had a chance to visit with Kim on a couple cases, then, I think Myanmar is in good hands, if folks like you are around and interested and eager, I'm excited for your country with, with folks like you coming over, her English is better than mine, so it's, um, she's very impressive, and we're delighted to have you here, and I wish you the best of luck, and I hope Saginaw can, has done something to help you and help your, your, uh, country and your, your town, so, i- it's been a great relationship.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving forward, item number ten, multi-year financial plan update, for that, Louis McLean. Gabe, do you wanna introduce or any preamble for Louis before we get started?
Uh, Louis needs no introductions. Um, you'll recall a few months ago, the city council approved, uh, financial, multi-year financial plan, so since that time, I wanna say it was in December, staff has worked pretty closely with Louis on a number of fronts, he's kinda presenting in, a little bit of an interim report this evening focused on, uh, our tax rate and bonding capacity, so, um, I think once our cables are connected, Louis will, um, start the show.
There, technology works, nice when it does. It is nice to be here tonight and to give you, uh, really, a little progress report, uh, in regard to the, uh, multi-year financial plan.
Mr. McLean, will you move the microphone there so it's in front of you, so the folks at home that are watching can hear you, I don't know how easy it is to do, but let's make sure they get the best audio as possible.
I wanna make sure I, how about that? Uh, you've seen the presentation that was mailed out, I've got, uh, the same, uh, presentation with two additional slides, uh, this is one of them, and I wanna start this way because I, these words in this specific language was not in my agreement, but it is the way I view my assignment. I'm in my forty-sixth year of being in local government, by the way, the greatest laboratory on planet earth, and all of those years, uh, I have followed this, and I'm assuming this is my assignment, but this is also all of our assignments, to do all we can, eh, all the good we can, by any means we can, in all the ways we can, in all the places we can, at all the times we can, to all the people we can, as long as we can do that. I really do believe that, and, uh, and, and I really do think that there are some great news for Saginaw. You have a lot going for you, in our study, there's going to be several pieces, I don't know that we will meet, uh, have an individual meeting for each one of these pieces, but we'll talk about the general fund, the debt-supported INS fund, capital improvements, water and sewer, as well as third debt service and CIP, and then some other funds. Tonight, we're isolating the topic to be just the tax-supported, uh, debt, and there's a reason for that. Uh, we're gonna try to answer, uh, these questions, uh, how much tax-supported debt can Saginaw afford without raising the tax rate? Second, how much more debt can we afford for every penny that we were to raise the tax rate if the vote is approved? And then lastly, what are the specific assumptions we need to understand? So, key assumptions, your tax base, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty, and this is preliminary, but it's, uh, you broke two billion dollars, two point oh seven seven billion dollars, and that's, that's pretty amazing, that's, to put that into perspective, we take the population, which is twenty-two thousand six fifty-three approximately, and that turns out to be ninety-one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars per capita. Uh, very respectable, you do have a commercial base, commercial and industrial base here in Saginaw that many cities would, would just love to have. To give it a perspective, your tax base per capita was sixty-eight thousand one forty-two just four years ago, so you have been increasing, uh, handsomely, and just under double digits, and, uh, that gives us, uh, room to do things, as we translate it into operations, which will be at another meeting, and as we translate it into debt service. Now, the tax rate for your debt service is currently point one eight, or eighteen, a little over eighteen cents, out of your total tax rate of forty-seven one eighty, that's about thirty-eight percent, that's a critical metric, there's a lot of things that we look at just to, just to make sure they sort of stay within some parameters that, uh, pretty much keep you in the norm, and to keep you within the parameters that the bond rating agencies look at, if you were to look through your bond documents when you issued bonds, the last time you issued bonds, you would see a number of things, including, guess what, tax base per capita, and you would see the percentage of your tax rate going for, uh, debt service. So, uh, right now, you're at thirty-eight percent, if, there was a one single number that you hear most of the time, it's a two-thirds, one-third, of course, that's sixty-six percent and thirty-three percent, you're a little bit higher than that, uh, if you were to survey a thousand cities across Texas, you'll find a pretty wide range, but, uh, as I'll tell you in a minute, I'm, uh, you have been as high as forty-one percent of your tax rate going to debt in the last few years. Now, with that in mind, what we have done is to show a projected, for the foreseeable future, that your tax base per capita would grow by two percent a year. Now, if I just told you it's been averaging just under ten percent a year, most reasonable people would say, well, two percent sounds pretty reasonable, and it is, uh, we wouldn't dare want to go, uh, i- as high as you have been in the last few years, just because the compounding would soon sort of put you, uh, in, into a league that, uh, you, you wouldn't find very many places. It, it, the, the, uh, sustainable rate is an important, uh, metric, and just under ten percent annually is a little bit too much, two percent may be a little bit too low. We wanna be conservative, uh, because number one, we're starting with a very large base. Also, we're looking at a population estimate of about five hundred and twenty-five people per year, if you divide that by two point eight or three people, that'll give you an idea of how many houses that, or housing units that turns into, and so, uh, it is, uh, compared to the last ten years, you've been growing about three hundred and ninety-one people per year, uh, but you've had a, had some growth spurts in the last few years, obviously you've seen the house tops. Also, going forward, we've used an assumption that forty percent of your tax rate is going to go for debt service, again, within a, a parameter that I'm comfortable with, and on any given year, if you were to go one or two percent in either direction, that, that's not even a yellow flag, uh, you just wanna, i- i- if you get outside the parameter, try to return to that in the planning years, if we can do that. Now, I did my own debt analysis, but, uh, I'm careful not to step on the toes of your bond advisors, you pay them, uh, to help you sell bonds, and so basically, we gave them the assumptions that we just gave you, and they came back with, uh, specific debt schedules to show that you could sell twenty million dollars in twenty twenty, and ten million dollars in twenty twenty-three, for a total of thirty million dollars without raising the tax rate. That's good news, I mean, any way you look at it, now, I'll show you a chart in a minute on why, why you can do that, it's not by, by accident. Now, that would leave even more debt financing capacity after twenty twenty-three. Uh, you, if you wanna maintain the tax rate at a certain level, then you have to do sort of how, how we've done it on the front end, and as debt is paid off, you can add more debt and keep the tax rate, the interest in sinking, or the debt service tax rate about the same. Roughly, that's about thirty-five million more dollars some, sometime after twenty, uh, twenty-five, if you look at the debt schedules that were provided, again, basically, if you could handle thirty million dollars in the next two to three years, and then still be able to handle up to another thirty-five million dollars, and, you know, probably between five and ten years after that, that means you can do a lot, and still maintain the tax rate, and, and the tax rate being forty, the tax rate going for your debt service, forty percent of your, of your total tax rate. Now, that forty percent is, you know, we're emphasizing the, uh, the debt service component, but why the sixty percent for the general fund? If, uh, again, you were to look at a thousand cities, and you would see there is a reason why this roughly two-thirds and one-third holds true. Uh, if you build a fire station, I'm using, yes, the most dramatic examples, uh, uh, on purpose, if you build a fire station, or you build a library, or you build a recreation center, you've got staffing, equipment, programming that goes inside of those buildings, what does that roughly turn out to be? Sixty, forty, or two-thirds, one-third, in that range. Now, I am so proud of this chart, but, uh, some people are word people, some people are number people, some people are, are graphic, a picture, uh, people, and so, let, let me just explain, or what to focus your eyes on, the blue is your current debt service as it falls off. So if you were to not sell any debt again, ever, then basically in twenty, twenty, uh, twenty thirty-seven, you would be making your last payment and have no more debt. But the way that it falls off is what gives you additional capacity, so if we were to take the first twenty million dollar bond issue in twenty twenty, that adds the green to it, and then the other ten millions adds the, I think that's an orangish, uh, color, and you would see that the debt service goes up, but it, it falls off. Uh, bondholders are interested in that fact that you have capacity in the future, so this is sort of a typical debt schedule, but what you don't see, uh, just in looking at the bars, is that, as I described, your tax base will grow. Well, as your tax base grows, your, uh, debt service component of your tax rate will still decrease, it'll decrease, and so the dotted line is your current level of debt service. The, the debt, uh, the tax rate falls off, so anything between that horizontal line, and then the red line that falls off is future debt capacity. Now, uh, I think I may have mentioned to this, to you, this to you, uh, the night we, uh, we first spoke, is, a couple of things you have to look at is, uh, let's just say you had, uh, sixty million dollars worth of bond or, or capital project needs, right now, I can guarantee you, you're, you, you probably, a- and if you sold the bonds, you go, okay, we've got the money, now... Now, Dolph and everyone else in the room, get busy and implement these projects. The fact is, you couldn't build sixty million dollars worth of projects in one or two or three years. If for no other reason, if you replace a street or tear up a street, you realize that you've got to have other avenues for people to get through town. So, if you had two streets that are parallel and they both need to be replaced, you're not going to replace them both at the same time because one's got to carry the traffic over the other. So, we, we've nailed down with these assumptions what I think is some pretty good news. And you always want to be able to say, and we will still have some capacity. So, what happens if your tax base grows by four percent annually? We would be coming back to you. And if you sold the first twenty million, we'd probably be able to say, well, instead of ten million in twenty twenty-three, we can sell, I don't know, twenty-five million. If the tax, if we go into a recession and the tax base goes flat, then it could be that that debt issue in twenty twenty-three is, needs to be moved to twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five. That's why this is not a document that we just kind of do a study and put it on the shelf. It's, if it is, it'd be a living document, but it's more of a process. Because every time you get a piece of news, good news or bad news, you go back and evaluate. Every two years, you know that the legislature is going to meet four hundred and forty days. And every two years, you don't know what's going to happen that's going to affect your ability to tax, your ability to raise money, and so forth. So, this is a process, and it's meant to be something that's looked at every year and revised as needed, reported back to you as we report new things.
Do you want to cover the taxing, the truth and taxation trap on that chart or in your, your later bullets?
It's a later.
Okay, because I, that's a big question I have.
Yes. So, to answer the question, how much more can we sell for every penny we would be willing to raise the tax rate and for forty percent of that to go to debt? Roughly, that equates to about one point three million dollars in bonds for every one penny that you would be willing to raise the tax. That's a second slide I have in here that when I send this to you, it'll be a little bit different from the one you originally saw. There is one concern, I want to go back and point it out to you. In the, or over the second bar, you'll see that the tax rate that's needed to fund that, your existing debt, actually drops. That is partially, or actually mostly because you can't, the way bonds are typically structured is they, you start paying principal and interest in the following year. So, what happens is, and this is common, and I, I want to emphasize that, I put it in my presentation, that you have the choice, and this, I'll go back to your choice. You can temporarily drop the INS tax rate. And then, in a year or two, bring it back up to the same level or issue that, that debt. But it is a common truth and taxation trap, if you will. You can also issue some short-term debt. And in this case, always, always, if you've got twenty million dollars worth of bonds you're going to sell in twenty twenty or even beyond that, there is always front-end either studies, feasibility studies, or engineering studies. So, it's not hard to identify some costs that if you had the money on the hand, if you had the money on hand today, you might start studying it or to acquire some right-of-way, if there's right-of-way involved. So, I just point this out because what I think is going to happen is with your financial advisors, we'll be coming back in a month or two or more and in essence, say, we recommend that you issue some short-term debt. You can actually do it a number of ways, including with a, a short-term bank loan. So that you use that temporary dip to, in essence, say, we're, we're going to pay debt service in that year, and it's not going to be a dip. It's going to stay level. I've got a pros and cons here in a minute. And, and actually, I've got a slide out of order. Pros and cons of what I just told you would be there is a potential for that to be misunderstood. What are you doing, manipulating the truth and taxation rate? Partially, yes. In terms of not wanting to have the city get penalized because you've got a temporary period where if you drop the rate and then try to raise it again, you're, you're, you're always at risk that for a variety of reasons, the council at the time doesn't want to do that. No one argues when you want to cut the tax rate. And, but it's, it's harder to get it back. And so, we're just being honest with you and saying, that's a trap. You're, it's not a Saginaw trap. It's a truth and taxation trap. You might recall, those of you who were here two or three years ago when I, I, we dug deeply into that subject. It is a, it, it, it's confusing, and it can become a penalty. And then, and here we are, facing another little quirk in that law. There are some other things that could happen. What if your bond election doesn't pass? And now, you've started some studies. Well, many cases, those aren't necessarily lost dollars. But you'd have to evaluate the reason for losing the bond election. So, I, I want to put that out because I want you to just understand that, I go back to my first slide. As far as I'm concerned, you engage me to help you figure out how can we do all that we can do as long as we can for the most people to address most of the needs. Now, let's talk about truth and taxation. There is a, number one, we don't know right now truly what is going to get adopted. I was hoping we would know by tonight. We may know by tomorrow what's going to be sent to the governor's desk. But we don't know. So, what I've done is provide a sensitivity table that in essence tries to estimate what your rollback rate will be. And I use a three and a half percent. If there was one number that you go, what's the consensus? What do you think is going to happen on this cap, tax cap? And the best number I have is about three and a half percent. So, not knowing, I do what I would always try to do and then go, I don't know right now, but I can tell you if it's two and a half, three and a half, four and a half, if it was left at eight, then this is what your additional debt service would need to be to keep your rollback rate the same as your current rate. Now, we don't, also, we do not know, won't know until July twenty-fifth, what your certified tax roll is. The appraisal district gives us a preliminary number. And that could change. We're in that period where they go through the review board hearings, and they can lower some property values. But the preliminary values that you, it should go up from here. Just how much, we don't know, the two point oh seven, seven billion. Now, I, I must, I must inject something at this point. I can promise you, out of the fifteen hundred local governments, every single one of them are trying to figure out. They're, they're in the season of, of looking at their budgets. And they're trying to figure out what's going to happen if the tax cap is X. I, I can only now give you an opinion of what I think cities are going to do. And this is just based on forty-six years of watching what local governments have to do to, to provide the services that the citizens are asking for. Well, in my forty-six years, I've never seen a city council say, we're bored to death, we need to go find out something to spend money on. Not once. The services tend to come from people coming to this podium at every meeting and saying, when are you going to fix this? Or we need more of this, or we need more of that. Unfortunately, we all know, they don't show up when you need to raise the taxes to pay for it. But the fact is, I think what's going to happen is cities are going to start going, number one, educating their vote, their public and their voters. And they're going to go to annual elections to set the tax rate. You know, representative government was set up so that you didn't have to go poll twenty-five thousand people every week to decide if you're going to spend money on this purchase or that purchase. Or, you know, that's what representative government is all about. Okay, so if the state takes that away, then what you're going to have to do is go, okay, let's, let's be honest. Holding an election from the cost standpoint is not that much money. Now, the nuisance factor is significant, and voter fatigue is real. I'm just saying, I think what's going to happen is we're here to serve. You ask for these things. Oh, by the way, the only other, most of the only other things that you do that the citizens didn't ask for is what the state or the federal government imposed on you. Isn't that ironic? So, I, I just think that's what's going to happen. In other words, you may recall, those of you here, that three years ago, I told you that the truth and taxation calculation was worthless. And I feel even stronger now because what's going to happen is that crazy multi-page form that you got to fill out is now going to have more things built into it because of, of the tax cap. And I personally think it's going to mean less and less. It's going to get more and more complicated. So, I think what's going to happen is you're going to realize, you know what? It's just easier to try to explain to the public and then tell them, we're not making you do this. Or we're doing this only because we have to. But you're going to have to approve the bond election. And then, you're going to have to come back and approve the operating money for the police station or fire station or the, or the recreation center, the operating portion. What some of us are hoping or kind of expecting to see is that, what if you, when you call your bond election, that in your ballot language, you say, you know, it's, it's for this building or this facility or, and you're voting to pay for that structure, but you're also approving to pay for the O and M costs associated with it. By the way, that was always implied for anyone who ever voted on a fire station and then didn't think it was going to cost something to put trucks and crew and, and all of that inside of it, had to be la-la-la. So, one of the things that will legitimately address what the state legislature is wanting, and that is to force you to have the citizens have a vote and to be able to vote no. You might as well have it so if you vote no, I mean, you can't vote yes on this fire station and then vote no on the O and M cost. So, those are my thoughts. Something is going to be happening, it's going to happen soon. And once you know, you're going to start seeing a lot of other issues that, that come up. So, what I'm saying is, if truth and taxation was worthless, in my opinion, and, and by the way, most of my brothers and sisters in the, in the profession, if that was worthless, it's going to be even less valuable. And I think what's going to happen is you're going to say, just publish, just do comply with the law, but then go ask for voters to do what, to allow you to pay for what they had asked for. So, the recommendation here is to approve the short-term financing strategy and then to follow the aggressive timetable. On April the sixteenth, you gave the nod to the recommendation from the staff to postpone the bond election until May of twenty twenty. Even that is going to come around in a hurry when you, when you think about the proper way to set your committees up, to review the projects, and here's the slide. Let me, let me skip to this one. If you could just visualize this, what you will have after you assign the committees or create the committees, challenge them to do their review, is they're going to come back with projects that every, they'll likely all be worthwhile projects. But at some point, you're going to end up with a priority or a ranking. And that ranking would be the ranking from the committee. In fact, very likely, the committee gives you their priorities. So, if they come up with fifty thou, fifty million dollars worth, then you go, wait a minute, tell me your priority. And then collectively, you as a council will review that and tweak that and balance that. But somewhere along the way, you're going to end up with projects and cost and what that means on the tax rate. And then, the cumulative, and I just tried to give you a visual where the light green is, we can fund those without raising the taxes. And then, beyond that, it's a little bit of an increase all the way up to, and I use a ten cent increase just to, just to kind of give you some ranges. So, you end up with a line that you draw. And you go, this is what we're willing to put before the voters. And you go, "This is what we're willing to put before the voters." And by the way, even the line, those that fall below the line, many of those are likely to be, "Yes, but not now." In other words, we don't disagree that we need that. But in this next, say, five-year block, this is, you know, even with a tax rate increase, this is all we can do. Then you would also try to create, there, there tends to be a, a spirit of community and camaraderie and pride and so forth that comes, that's involved in a bond election. And so, one of the biggest mistakes cities make is they wait too long before they have another bond election. And don't take advantage of that. So, you know, that, that community endorsement, the ambassadorship that comes from the committees that you form. And then ideally, every, say, five years, you would, you would look at the progress that's been made and say, "We now know we can fund some more, let's go, let's go vote those." So basically, that's what the next steps are about. And then we'll be talking about water and sewer. You don't tend to vote on water and sewer projects. The law doesn't, I don't think your charter says you have to vote on those. Water and sewer projects typically aren't voted on because of the, the public health nature of those. There's not too many glamorous water and sewer line projects that most people have.
Until they don't work.
Until they don't work, yes. I stand ready for questions, any comments?
Council questions from Mr. McLean? Better?
Yes. Thanks, Louis, very much. I appreciate all the work that you do. Just a few things in talking through our, yeah, just a few things in talking through our, our adopting or embracing the 60-40. I'm okay with that in the short term. I am not anywhere close to being okay with that in the long term. And what I'm saying is that if we're going to embrace that, I think that we should talk about the foreseeable future, maybe the next two to five years, that we not allow ourselves to be in a position where in the 60-40 for more than five years. I, I just don't like being out there on the fringe for that long.
How long, what would you like to see as a target?
I'd like to hold the five years. And where we're getting back to that at least 35% range within the next eight to 10 years.
Okay. I want, I want to hear every word you have to say. But let me, let me respond to that. You remember, we were, we're just about ready, we were reluctant, especially on my part, for us to rush and adopt financial policies just a few months ago. This was one of the reasons. But, but hopefully you can see where we can now turn this into a policy. And the policy would, could easily be stated such as you just did, that we want to be, we're okay at, at a minimum at this level, but we want to be at another level within five years.
Precisely. And I'm perfectly fine with that. I understand, especially when needs arise, that we're going to have to push the envelope. And we're going to have to get a little bit out on the fringe. I, I get it. But I don't want to have this perpetual idea that we're going to hang out on the fringe from here to eternity. I'd like to have something in policy that says, "If we do stand on the edge of the cliff, let's have a, you know, point in time in which we're backing away from the edge." That's, I'm perfectly fine with that.
And that's, and that's a good example of a responsible way to, to shift in a reasonable amount of time. And then what, what our ultimate financial plan would look like is just that, that we're going to say, "Let's go 60-40, 59, make sure I go in the right direction, 39, 61 and so forth, and get to 65, 35 in, in the five years." And by the way, that's the nice thing in the multi-year plan and what rating agencies will like to look at. They, they want to see that you know where you're going. They can actually hang with you with bad news or temporary parameter bust. You're getting back to where you're supposed to be and you know. Number one, if you know that, that you're out of bounds and then you know how to get back there. What, what else? I, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 that's, and I appreciate that. I, I think the other thing is, is we've, by projecting our rate onto the 2.077 billion, okay? We've, we've created this potential for the need to borrow. If we were projecting that rate on our current valuation, which is around eight, six, eight, nine? Is that right? 1.89? Is that where it is?
Yes.
Close? So, 1.89 now. If we were projecting our rate on that number, we would not have the need to borrow, but we would be fixing our rate at a point where we would be penalized in a truth in taxation trap. So, so that I understand that. And with, with that component known, the options that are available to us, and I, this, I don't know if you can answer this question because you're not financial advisor, but surely you've seen it done. Can we, as a city, establish a loan and borrow from ourself?
Borrow from yourself?
Yes.
In almost every case, the answer is yes.
Okay.
But it's where, where from.
Okay.
And if it's a legally constrained, well, the answer is yes. And why, why would I say that? Because I can show you a dozen examples. And it also, it, it matters about the magnitude and the length of the loan. You look, where do you have money that you could borrow? You know, a significant amount for, you know, more than a year or two.
It would be to the point where we would be paid back with the first issuance of bonds. I mean, essentially it'd be a short-term loan.
So, I will let the, and actually, it's not the financial advisor, I will let the bond attorney. You know, you've got two big players. And, and that's really a bond attorney question. But there's inter, inter-fund loans that can be found everywhere. So.
At a price, at a price. But what I'm saying is, we currently are sitting on, probably in the range of 17 million. It's really not gaining any interest right now. I mean, it's an extremely low-interest-bearing account. And I don't see a reason, short of the risk, of the bond not passing. If the bond doesn't pass, that would be a very interesting situation.
Yeah.
But I don't see why we, as a city, who have already collected this money, couldn't borrow it interest-free. I, I don't understand why we couldn't do that. Is there, is it possible to structure a loan, a short-term loan, that's interest-free so that our taxpayers aren't having to pay interest on money that we already have?
All I can say is, I've seen it done many, many times.
Okay.
So, would this just be to avoid the truth in tax, the truth in taxation trap, right? That be the primary purpose?
Well, yes and no. Because I think, I think if we, Todd, I'm afraid if we don't take advantage of the, of projecting our rate onto our new valuation, we're, we're limiting where we can be in terms of long-term debt. So, and, and yes, it's, it's to avoid the truth in taxation trap that he's just communicated.
Well, and, and we can research that. We, you know, I, I view, and, and I told Kim this, I view your auditors, your financial advisors, your bond attorneys as an extension of your staff, if you will. And so, so here's what we do. We present that to them. And if there needs to be a particular ordinance drawn up or if there is a law that would prevent that from happening, then basically, we would, we would say, "Okay, your, your bond attorney is not going to let you do that." But now, sometimes those do have to be distinct tax-supported instruments. In other words, you can do a bank loan, but you have to pledge your tax base or your tax rate to, to cover that. Otherwise, you, you can't do that. So, I would be unwise to be giving legal advice here. But I also know that you, you ask the question and give the answer and then let them tell you, "You can't do it."
Well, that's what they specialize in. They, they, they know whether or not the funds that you're looking at are legally available. And, and you're not going to, like you say, commit something against state law.
So, what I'm getting at is that, let's just say it's $8 million. Okay? The, the loan, the interest-free loan at 5.5%, which is a small loan, short-term, probably be in that range. It saves taxpayers $20,000. So, I mean, it's 20 grand.
And you use that money to kick-start a capital improvement project? That would be the, essentially what we'd do with any?
And we would pay that $8 million back on the first issuance of bonds.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, the question you've mentioned, what if the bond package doesn't pass?
That's, that makes it an interesting situation.
It gets complicated, doesn't it?
But we're going to be investing $8 million in something. There's no doubt about it. I think we can all in this room
We have plenty of projects.
Agree that somewhere in the next two years, we're going to be investing $8 million in something.
We have opportunities, yeah.
I think we have a fire chief over there that has some ideas. We have a lot of folks that have some ideas.
We wouldn't have a problem spending it, yeah.
I go back to my very first slide. Understand, and I am accustomed to trying to figure out a way something would work. You never want to say no to anybody until you've exhausted all the other, you know, methodologies. So, duly noted and, and to the extent that, and how that works with the truth in taxation, we'll just have to wait and see at, at the time. What else?
Just one other question.
Okay.
In your assumptions, our current year, 10-year historical track in terms of numbers of humans per year is 391. Is there a reason that you bumped it up to 525?
Looking at the more recent history, the most recent growth, and from what I understand, you've got in the pipeline in terms of platted, yeah, you know, the, the, that, that pipeline, very interesting because if you look at what happens when you do the preliminary plat and then you get a final plat, and then you've got billing permits, and then you've got COs, and you've got meter connections and so forth. It's, it's not too hard to get a pretty good idea of what's coming online. In other words, once they play, they pay your plating fees and your impact fees that are assessed at plating, typically, they're not going to go, "Oh, never mind. We're really not going to, we're going to defer this for two years." They've got a lot of money tied up at that point. So, you know, those are some indications there. And that is an average. I mean, I think you've had some big jumps population-wise. You just, like, over 1,000 people in one year or, you know, close to that. But that's where, you know, we, we just have to see. You know, will there be a recession in this five-year plan?
Who knows?
Well, there's every reason to believe that there will be. Just across the state, sales taxes, the earliest indicator of any economic changes in Texas are sales taxes. And you get, you get a warning, clear warning, 60 days after it's happened. Because your May sales taxes were for business that happened in March. And there was, there, we have been slowing down for six months in the growth rate, growth rate. No, I, I said, "we." The, the state as a whole, and it takes a whole lot to change the direction of the local governments, all 1,640 of them. And in, in May, it took a, a pretty big drop. So, is, is that enough of an early warning indicator? Well, if you add to that, we are way, way overdue for a recession. We just happen to have an oil patch that's helping the state, the entire state, including the urban cities. So, so I, I don't know, but I fully expect there to be a recession. And just as luck would have it, it'll be about the time you adopt the multi-year plan. And then, you know, but at the same time, that is why you have reserves. That is why you have conservative budgeting. And the true test of a city is when you can go through a recession. Maybe not quite as bad as a great recession, but one almost that bad. But you don't lay off people. As a matter of fact, and you don't postpone projects. As a matter of fact, if we could get into a good depression, I'm being a little bit facetious. If we could get in a good recession, then sell all the bonds you can afford and build every project you can build at 20% less than what it costs.
There's no doubt about it, there'd be this great time to hit the marketplace.
Well, we're building a plan with that, hopefully with that kind of buoyancy to it, that resiliency to it.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. You know, one thing we didn't talk about, of course, tonight is sales tax. But, you know, really our, one of our goals with our economic development program, which is new, it's only a year with a dedicated staff person, is to, to get things that people want in the community, but also to expand our, our sales tax generation, our sales tax base, which will, you know, help us on the O and M side when we have those demands, like Louis talked about with new people. Alora's in, at a conference right now, the International Council of Shopping Centers, talking with, with real estate brokers in the hopes that we get some prospects. But, you know, to Louis's point, Councilmember Farr's point, once upon a time, I was in the Budget Office in Sugar Land, Texas. And Sugar Land wrote out the Great Recession exactly as Louis described, and paid cash and issued a lot of debt. Got very favorable pricing on projects because it was planned for. Now, 50%, over 50% of that time, the general fund was sales tax-funded, which is really nice to have that bigger retail base. nice, to have that bigger retail base, and we don't have that luxury, but planning is, planning's important, I want to, want to stress that.
Yeah, the only unfortunate thing in a, in a recession, consumer confidence tanks, and they're not going out to eat as often. So, we kind of lose some sales tax opportunity in a recession, but it is a perfect opportunity to build, because the market gets very tight, and material gets cheap, labor gets cheap.
Well, that's where shovel-ready, the term shovel-ready comes into play, and that's why you would want to do anything you can to get ready. So when you issue those bonds, you've got the studies, and maybe the engineering, you've got the right-of-way purchase, you're ready, and, and, because it's, it's possible that window could be, that ideal window could be six months long. And so, that's why this is a process. This is not, this, this is not a study that stops.
All right, folks, other questions for Mr. McLean? I have one question, just, I just want to make sure we are all clear on this, and I think I know the answer. So the legislature, whatever they change, whatever laws they pass, will not go into effect till fiscal year 2021, correct?
That, we don't know that yet. I don't think it has it. It's, I don't think they're going to give cities time. Here's what would happen. If it doesn't go into effect for a year, every single city is going to go up to 8% on the, on that O&amp;M piece. And, and rightfully so, in one sense, because if, if you knew you could always go to 8, and you only needed 4, you'd go to 4. But if you don't, you know, if you don't know, or if you're under a 3.5% cap, and you've got one more year to get the 8%, you, you would do that.
So they could implement it to go into effect this year? They could do a special session going into the summer, and really catch us right up at the end of the bud, budget year, and make us...
Most bills go into effect September the 1st.
Okay.
And, and if the governor signs it, actually, they could make it even earlier than that. So I'm under the impression, we're going to have, we're going to have that, when we get the July 25 certified tax rolls, we're going to be under the new caps.
Okay. All right, that's good to know.
And, you know, if, if, if there is a way to make it faster or more severe, obviously, we've got a, a state that doesn't like city governments, and, and are making no bones about it.
Any other questions for Mr. McLean? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
We will see you again soon. All right, so at 7:33, we convene back into regular session. Item 12 executive session, I do believe is not required. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Valerie, Patrick second, all those in favor? At 7:33, we're done. Thank y'all, folks.
I'm going to be here.